Welcome to the Thursday, February 9th Planning Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded. I would also like to note that Kevin Weinfeld, our chairman, and Gary Whitehouse are both attending via Zoom. The first item on the agenda this evening is old new business, planners report.
Yes, thank you. So, the good news is about the Walnut Street project, the infrastructure part of it, is we are going out to bid. Pleased to announce that we're going to be doing that in the next few weeks and hope to start construction relatively soon. So hopefully, we have some more detailed news about that, but I can tell you that we're going out to bid. With respect to the zoning board, as you know, they've had a 119 Moore Street in front of them. We're anticipating a decision will be made next Thursday night on that. We thought it might be last week, a last meeting, but there was some deliberation and some discussion, but we expect that it will close and be decided finally this next Thursday night, week from tonight. And then, no break for them because then they're moving right into the Walnut Street 40B, which is, you know, a slightly different product in that it's a Housing Authority-sponsored project with all 200 units affordable for seniors. The schedule, I've listed it here, it's fairly aggressive. And the reason for that is, again, it's a different type of 40B in the sense that it's a, you know, public housing project that we've all worked on for a long time. And there's an opportunity for funding to be obtained, we hope, that would require an April application date for the low-income tax credits and because it's a former Decam property. So, plus the zoning board's kind of tired. And while, you know, this will be an extra load for them for two months, you know, they've been meeting intensely since July. So I think they don't mind kind of stepping it up in order to sort of get it over with in a way. But obviously, you know the zoning board, they'll never rush anything, they never take shortcuts. So lest anybody think that means there won't be due diligence, there will be. The plan, we're going to talk about that project specifically shortly because after, later in our agenda because the zoning board would like some comments from the planning board amongst others. Central Street Veterans Parking Lot, that's the lot behind all the businesses on Central Street. We've been working hard on that. We had a stakeholder meeting earlier this month and we had about 14 stakeholders attend. I was out walking it again today with a budding landowner and DPW director. So we're working out things like the dumpsters and whatnot. The good news is we did get $50,000 in funding from, thanks to Jay Barrows and Senator Feeney. And Chris's quotes on asphalt have come in and it looks like we are going to be able to repave that lot, which will be great because it'll just really, you know, step it up and make it a little safer to traverse. We're going to have to get a sign back up to indicate that the Wall Street access is one-way. That sign fell down and it's dangerous. So these are all things, we're, we're hard at work on that. A little bit more about the Uptown Parking and Circulation. The DPW is in the process of installing 10-minute parking signs on certain locations. And then we're also working with Station One/ Shovel Town to determine daytime loading space on Rock Hill Street. They're also trying to add another accessible space on Rock Hill. So we're working around all that, but we want to make sure that, you know, we're seeing Rock Hill blocked off sometimes, so we're trying to see if there's a way to deal with that. Although I will say, I was on an Economic Development Roundtable yesterday with about 40 planners in the state and a lot of them in the eastern part, you know, Cambridge, Arlington, Watertown, those types. So I did ask the question about how people handle deliveries and the disruption to, say, roads, sidewalks, parking lots. And it was kind of good and bad to hear that everyone has the same problem and there is no solution. So, you know, I mean, it's frustrating, but it just seems like the way, the woman from Dedham was saying that she noticed that Coca-Cola trucks were coming to all the restaurants in Dedham Square. And so she worked so hard to try to get the Coca-Cola trucks to coordinate deliveries. So there was like one truck going to each business. And she's like, by the time I left that job, I had never conquered the Coca-Cola trucks. So it was kind of comical where it's like we all kind of deal with the same problems. But we are trying to see if there's a way to figure something out, you know, at least on a part-time basis over there on Rock Hill. People are not using the Uptown Schneider lot. I got a text from Chief Grace, I think it was Sunday. Uptown was booming with Oliver Jr. and, you know, football on TV or maybe not, there wasn't much football on TV. But, I mean, something was going on uptown and Judy's was full, Bank of America was full, and the Schneider lot had no spaces. So trying to figure out how that's just lack of desire for people to walk because Sunday was warm, no, Sunday was warm.
Was it?
Sunday was warm, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's just lack of visibility and, you know, people are just, you know, I said, like, if it's Foxborough people, the hardest thing is, is Foxborough people kind of know the, the deal. And they're almost the worst ones. I mean, I don't mean that derogatorily, but like, they're, they know they're not going to get towed probably, they're not going to do it, so they kind of jam in. Whereas people from out of town might be a little more worried to park in Judy's because they might be afraid. So I kind of laughed, I'm like, it's probably local people. So those are the ones we see. But it's, you know what, it, everybody made it through. I don't know how it was at Bethany on Sunday, Jeff, but, you know.
I mean, it's fine.
Yeah.
You know, no one's coming before 11 o'clock anyway.
Right.
So.
So it's just bustling uptown is what it is, I guess.
On the delivery stuff, is that a daily occurrence?
I don't know.
And it would be on the other side of the street anyway, wouldn't it?
It would be on, I think, the theater side.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, why couldn't they just like, I assume they're just coming in box trucks? They're not, they surely can't be coming in tractor trailers, could they?
They said it's occasionally 53 footers, but rarely, you know, mostly not.
Well, we can talk. I don't see why you couldn't like tuck into the alleyway between the theater temporarily after daytime deliveries.
Yeah, we'll have to see. Yeah, I don't, no, they're working with the theater. And we thought we had it worked out and then we remembered the accessible space because we were going to kind of like for the daytime, just like have a temporary loading area for the first two spaces up by the theater so they could just pull up there, do it. But then we, we forgot there was going to be an accessible parking space there. So then that means they'd have to go further down and.
And they need to access that under, under grade.
Ramp under.
Ramp, yeah.
I don't know for sure. So we're working with Frank, we're working with the theater and we, you know, we know we have you if we need to. So we're working on it. We have a Route 1 sewer grant, $400,000, thanks to Jake Oakenclawson, his community project. So we're pulling together a meeting right now for March 6th and they've asked us to invite all the neighboring communities. So we have Plainville, Rentham, Sharon, Walpole. And actually, Plainville suggested we invite North Attleboro because their wastewater goes there. So we've invited North Attleboro, so that will be interesting. And then our new town manager, John Cordair, from Northboro, will begin on April 10th. Bill Keegan's retired now, but he's working on a consulting basis for the town. His last day, he'll have an overlap of about three days. And then, as a reminder, Bill Keegan's retirement party at the Lakeview Pavilion is March 30th. Let me know if you need to know how to buy tickets, I'm in charge of it. And then the MBTA Communities requirement, we did file an action plan with DHCD. And basically, as I think I, well, I might not have mentioned it to you guys yet, that we were pushing it off because we have a pilot on the commuter rail. So we want to wait and see if we're going to be an adjacent community or commuter rail community. So Diana did today post the action plan on the website, so it's up on the website. And, but for right now, we're kind of sitting tight while we figure out more so what's happening with the commuter rail. And I'm glad we filed the action plan because I saw on the Globe this weekend that only seven communities did not file action plans. So we would have been quite, no, it's not like we could have blended in with that. Seven out of like 175 or 177 is kind of a small number. That's all I have.
Okay, anything on active subdivisions? Action items, Diana?
I sent out the minute of January 12th yesterday. And on December 8th, we didn't approve them at the last one, I didn't put them on this agenda. Do we have to wait for the next agenda or can we add to this?
I don't know.
I sent both sets out.
I think we can.
I do too.
Yeah, we think we can approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve both the meeting minutes from December 8th as well as January 12th.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a bond release request for 17 Glenwood Ave., excuse me, Briarwood Construction.
So I received a, a request to release the bond for 17 Glenwood Ave. The project is complete. I did consult with Chris Gallagher since they were doing inspections on the site. And, and he's okay with the, with releasing the bond, the work has been done. The one outstanding thing was the paving of Glenwood. And that was done and Briarwood paid for the portion of the, the work that needed to be paid by them. So, so I recommend that the board vote to release the funds. And may I remind you that we have two members that are on Zoom, so we need to do a roll call vote, please.
Make a motion to release the letter of credit on the subdivision known as the Homes at Glenwood covering 17 Glenwood Avenue, Foxborough, Mass. Drawn under Rockland Trust Company, or vocably standby letter of credit number 3175 dated May 5th, 2023 for Briarwood Construction Corp. in the amount of $20,000.
And I would second that.
All in favor, roll call vote, please.
Gary, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Ron, aye.
And for the record, Kevin did say aye.
Yes.
And raised his hand.
Kevin, you are on mute. Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Lawson Farms Subdivision, Mr. Buckley?
Mr. Chairman, good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley, I'm Bay Colony Group, I'm representing the applicant, Lawson Phase 2 LLC. And this is, we're here this evening to, and we filed the requests back in January in order to, Condition 20 of the special permit issued back in 2016 required the roadway to be completed by December 1st, 2025. And then it was, I'm sorry, it was supposed to be completed by September 31st, 2021 and then it was extended by the COVID emergency to April 6th, 2023. So that, that a completion date requirement is coming up on April 6th. And as we talked at one of our previous meetings, you know, Mr. Bonby wanted to move forward and keep going because the, the market is good right now for him and the weather seems to be good. So he wants to strike while the iron is hot. And so what we're proposing is that the board grants an extension to December 1st, 2025. Just as a refresher, I'm actually going to put this up so everybody can just kind of remember what's going on up here. So this is a plan that shows the, the different phases of the project. The yellow is phase one, which is complete. The houses are all in, there is some curbing and some sidewalk at the entrance still remaining to be done for the islands and over on the right side, as you look at this plan. And a little bit up top here where we're going to, the gas is going to be coming in. Second phase, the roadway is up to base course, water's in, the lots have been released, eight of the 11 lots have been released by the board. The third phase is in the white here and that would be the, the last phase and it's seven lots. The, at one of our meetings, I forget which one it was, the board said, you know, please, you know, we had that issue where we ordered granite, it got sold out from under us. So the board said, you know, we wanted to see you put some skin in the game. So what I did is, in this letter, I included with you, I, I showed you where all the orders of the, the water line, the drainage is in. We didn't, we didn't do curbing because curbing's actually the last thing you do and we probably wouldn't be doing curbing until the fall here. But you can see all the other infrastructure and if you drove down there, you'd see it's on the ground. Down there up at the old cul-de-sac and then down where the roadways intersection and a lot of the drainages in this area are here. So I think that we've done the things that you've asked us to do. The reason I ask for 2025 is I, which seems like a long time, is three more years. But we were looking at the construction schedule. So as I stated, eight of the lots have been released and I think all eight have been sold. I know they've been talking to me about doing septic design. So what we expect to do this year is, in the spring, we expect to do finishing, put sidewalks in, put curbing in, and we can't do that. Actually, the subdivision regs, I was reading them and you're not supposed to install them until the driveways are installed. But there's a lot of things in the regs that contradict each other. So what we want to do is, once the septic, once the septic designs which show the driveway in the house are all completed, now we'll know where the curb cuts are. So he wants to get the curbing and the sidewalk in, in that point. So what we expect to happen this year, curbing sidewalks and trees for phase two and then hopefully most of the lots, houses built on phase two, maybe not completed, but certainly under construction. And then if, if the board grants the waiver, or grants the extension for phase three, 2024, the roads would be built this year for phase three, that last section. The homes would be built and we'd probably ask for lot releases hopefully this fall if the, the road gets built. And so those homes would be built next year, be finished up next year. And then, once the road, once those houses are done, we would topcoat it because you don't want to topcoat it with a lot of construction going on and then it has to sit for a year. So now we're into 2025. So I'm, I'm eyeballing the fall 2025 meeting, town meeting to accept the road. So that's why I, I was asking for that at length. I think that's, that's it.
Okay, do we have any questions from the board? I do have one question, Bill. The third phase, that portion of the road is passable at this point in time, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that was part of the agreement that we'd had, that would be brought up to an area that emergency vehicles could get through, so. That being said, I don't really have any issues either, Jeff?
No.
Mr. Whitehouse, Mr. Weinfeld, any comments?
I just wanted to make sure that, I just wanted to confirm the fact that we have a bond in place already for phase three or that hasn't happened yet, Bill?
No, there's no bond for phase three. We won't, we won't ask, we won't issue, we won't give you a bond until we ask for lot releases on phase three.
Okay.
Gary, did you have something?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the request for extension at Lawson Farms Subdivision till December 31st, 2025.
December 1st?
December 1st, 2025.
I'd second that.
All in favor?
Roll call.
Gary, aye. Kevin, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
Mr. Buckley, can you just remind Mr. Bonby to stay on schedule? Like, the extra time doesn't mean he has extra time.
I think once he, I think once he gets his money from the bank, which should be shortly, he'll be more than motivated to, to keep things moving. We're paying that interest every month, it's, it's motivating.
Anthony, interest rates, yes?
Yeah, that's true.
Next item up for discussion is the Walnut Street Comprehensive Permit.
Do we all want to skip that and go to the public hearing first? And then we can do Walnut Street at the end?
Sure, it's after 7:15, so we can absolutely do that. Right after Tracy returns.
You can probably start, she'll catch up.
Well, she is, I know what it's like.
Yeah, wait for it. We'll just take a quick two-minute recess. I used to like recess.
Do we get to go to the slangster in recess?
What is it?
Square ball.
Oh, square ball.
Yes, we did.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
My father never called, like, actually calls me. So when he does, I kind of have to. I'm here, I'm sorry, my apologies.
Okay, we had, we were just opening the public hearing. Okay, Mr. Buckley?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name's Cameron Gray. I'm here tonight on behalf of our client, Blue Diamond, to discuss the site plan that was submitted for our project at 61 East Belcher Road. So it's 61 East Belcher Road, consists of two parcels. So we have this front parcel out here and then he just recently acquired this rear parcel here. So in total, it's about 9.57 acres. And it's located on the southwestern side of East Belcher Road, so East Belcher Road's out here. The lot is serviced by a common driveway and this driveway was granted by a variance by the Foxborough ZBA in February of 2001. And this front lot was also one of five lots created by a Form A granted by the board in May of 2001. The property is located within the limited industrial zoning district and is bordered by commercial facilities to the south here. And then it's undeveloped land to the north up here and to the east over here. Or I'm sorry, to the west over there. Half the property serves as an equipment annex for our client currently. So that would be this front parcel here, it's entirely cleared. It's kind of hard to see. Let's see if I can zoom in. But the existing wood line is right here. And then that front parcel is basically entirely cleared up to that point. And then the rear parcel.
He's green, he's paused.
Sorry about that, okay. So the existing wood line is right here along the edge of the basin, basically. And then this rear parcel is currently undeveloped and consists of a wooded area. So we're proposing the construction of a 6,250-square-foot warehouse. The building will consist of individual contractor base and will have garage doors to access it along the front of the building here and additional garage door to access on this side here. So we're proposing a total of seven parking spaces to the north of the building here. And the remainder of the property out back here will be cleared so that way it can be used as additional storage for our client. The site is serviced by municipal water and will be serviced by a conventional septic system. I'm sorry I don't show it on my rendering, but the septic system will be located out front here. The onsite stormwater system will consist of roof drains and deep sum catch basins as well as a stormwater basin. So all the runoff from the parking area will go into two catch basins located at the front of the parking area here before being conveyed to the stormwater basin. And the roof runoff will be conveyed separately to the stormwater basin. We're also proposing an additional detention basin at the back of the lot. That'll capture the runoff from most of the proposed additional storage area. So the stormwater system has been designed to comply with the mass DEP stormwater standards as well as the Town of Foxborough Stormwater Management Bylaw. And then we're proposing a 10-foot buffer strip along the neighboring properties here. It will consist of plants and trees, so you can see it right along here. And I'm sorry, this rendering isn't up to date. We've also are proposing a 10-foot natural buffer that'll go along this back parcel here and will encompass the whole thing. We prepared a stormwater pollution prevention plan as well as a storm, as well as a snow storage plan that has been included at Sheet 7, the site plan. I think that's it, that concludes my presentation, thank you.
Okay. Cam, I have one, excuse me, one question.
Yep.
What is the purpose for clearcutting the whole lot?
So our client wants to maximize the site, so he has a lot of equipment right now up here in his current equipment annex. So he wants to, he recently acquired this parcel with the hopes that he's able to clear this back parcel and just increase his storage area.
Okay.
What does he have out there?
He's a heavy equipment contractor, so he has a variety of materials as well as excavators and other machinery out there.
And what would be the grades on that back parcel?
So the grades back here, we just kind of picked a grade in the middle here, so I think it's... So I grabbed that 268 contour and just basically did a 5% grade back up to that, up to back here. So it's a pretty big cut in the back. But if you go out there, this site, it's currently, there's a bunch of ledge outcrops. So really, he just wants to knock it down so he has a level area to store his equipment.
Oh, yes, that will be a cut.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do have a question, is there any onsite fuel storage?
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
No.
So Cam, this is Kevin Weinfeld, I'm just curious, you said, you said in the beginning of your presentation, I don't know what, I think it's in Lot 1A, they're currently storing materials and there's some kind of a structure out there, but I don't see it on your plan. So where, where does that exist?
So there's currently no structures on the lot out front there. It's just stored equipment annex for the client currently.
So it's, what's, whatever's in that, what you have on the blacktop there, well, we...
So there's currently...
So where the warehouse is going to be, is that where it is now, today?
Uh, no, so there's no buildings or structure out there. This lot is just clear up to that wood line and just consists of a gravel area.
Should I outline the whole area where?
So, but he has equipment stored there today?
Yes, he does, yeah. So it's, I can kind of outline it here. So it's just basically, this front parcel, it's encompassed by rock walls for the most part and it's just a large gravel area.
Could you outline what's currently cut?
That's what he did.
Yeah, that, that whole 1A, correct?
Yeah, yeah, so it's all this front lot.
So it's just this piece that hasn't been cleared?
Yeah, so that back parcel is currently all woods.
Do we have any comments from any other departments?
Let's see what we have here. Just, the Board of Health made sure that there was going to be no floor drains in the new building. Make sure that if there were any water and oil separators were in place.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
A couple of questions, so from, has the fire chief or one of the sergeants weighed in on this road?
Yeah, there's this letter that we received. Did they or they did?
No, I'm asking if they did and what did they say?
They did, actually. I, I did get an email from Deputy Laracy. Let me see if I can, I don't know if it's in there, but I can find it if not.
And then as you're looking... And then as you're looking that up, my other question is, is there any, because this does abut some residential, is there any, from a noise perspective, hours of acceptable operation?
Well, they have to follow the noise requirements.
Which are?
Um, what is it, Monday through Saturday? No Sundays?
Yeah, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Okay, thanks.
There are some concerns here from, um, Jane Pierce from Conservation, uh, as far as fuel storage on the site, which Mr. Whitehouse had brought up. She also has concerns about the loss of vegetation and habitat. Uh, I don't know where you stand with Concom at this point.
Um, so we actually met with Concom earlier this week. And up in their jurisdiction here, we've agreed to just basically pick up the parking area building and stormwater basin. And shift it slightly to the left, so that way we're pulled a little bit further away from the 25-foot notice there in order to preserve, uh, preserve a little bit more of that buffer zone.
Talk about the, uh, endangered species.
She was looking up the fire.
Okay, and then, um, this lot also falls within, um, endangered species area.
Right.
So our client took the necessary steps by hiring Oxbow Associates in order to, um, obtain the proper permits and get this, uh, project approved.
So that's still open with Concom?
Yes.
Yeah.
The plans were also...
Cam, Kevin Weinfeld again, just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Cam.
Just one other question, which is, so now, once they, once they build this new structure, the, the contractor bays and they have the lot there with the parking, et cetera, are they just going to drive off that asphalt onto the rest of Parcel 1A? And, uh, you know, in order to get to their equipment? How, how's that all going to work when they're trying to get their equipment out and across a new, a new asphalt parking lot and down the road to, to go out?
Yes, so the idea is that he'll be able to drive right out the asphalt and access any of his equipment. And he also, whoops, sorry. When he picked up this parcel in the rear, he has an easement down here. So the idea is that he'll be able to grab his equipment and can go down this gravel drive and be able to drive right out.
He has an easement over Mr., over Mr. DeGeralmo's family's land?
Yes.
So how does he get to that now that you put a buffer there?
Um, so I'd show the buffers, uh, the buffer right up to here. And then the 10-foot buffer, the natural buffer will be right along here. But in this area where I...
No, but how does he access? Yeah, go, I'm sorry.
So, um, like in this area here where I show the driveway and the grading, that will all be cleared.
So he'll be able to come down there somehow and then access through Mr. DeGeralmo's property?
Yeah, so this, I should have put a limited clearing line, but if you can follow my mouse here, this is basically it.
And there's no, so there's no, but you had said that right where the lions and the new section, there was supposed to be a buffer. So is there going to be a hole in the buffer?
There could be a buffer on the opposite side.
Yes. And is this road easement in use today?
No. Doesn't exist. I mean, there's no driveway there, just on paper.
Down at the bottom. All right, what about the utility easement at the bottom?
It's, it's just on paper. It's nothing, you know, nothing. I'll give you some history of this. Kevin probably remembers. Back when this was formed back in 2000. So this, if you look at the plan, it's, it looks like it's four mays. It looks like it's five four mays on East Belcher Road. But between the upland and East Belcher Road, there's a wetland that covers most of this. You can't really see it on this. So the ZBA granted a variance to allow a common driveway. So, and, and not to have access across your frontage. At the time, um, the backland that currently is shown as, um, lions and actually Mr., um, I forget his name. It's the name of a, um, endangered species organization to the back there, but lions in back. And then our parcel here, which we purchased, was all part of a piece of land owned by SNS Realty Trust. And then they conveyed it years ago to the, God, I can't think of it, my mind is gone. But it was, um...
I think it was Shriners?
Shriners, yes, thank you. It was to Shriners. And then the Shriners just sold it in pieces. So a piece went to Lions, a piece went to Mahoney's, and a piece is going, went to that, um, Wildlife Trust, which is to the west, which you can't see on this rendering, but you can see it on your plan. So at that time, when we went for the variance, Mr. Spillane Frank, not Mr., but Frank came in representing the Shriners and said, "We would like access through it." So as one of the conditions, or one of the agreements, I'm not sure which, that the, um, when this land was created, when this four may was done, that was included in there. So this, all of the land back there that was owned by Shriners now has access through DeGeralmo's property to the driveway to Belcher Road. Does that make sense? I know that was confusing.
And is the driveway, the thing at the bottom?
Yeah, that's, that's an easement. It's...
Because how did the, how did they get the, Peter and Susan, just because I can't pronounce the last name, how do they get onto their property?
They get on their property from the driveway. Can you zoom up? See right, this is, their property comes in off the common driveway. See it? See it right there?
It's the one that veers to the left?
Yeah, it's kind of that weird shaped lot. It's like a pork chop.
Okay, thank you, Cam.
Yeah, it's a pork chop shaped lot. I'm going to piss off Mike. But this is the lot right here.
He did just give you a dirty look.
But that's a pork chop shaped lot. So that's, this is the DeGeralmo's, um, yard. It's, it's a construction yard and they have all their heavy equipment, they have materials in there.
There's no house?
No, it's a building. It's a, this is all commercial. The, the only house on East Belcher in this area is like an old house right on the other side of the street there. It's kind of, um, it's better now, but... So this is meant to be, this is not going to be something that's going to be used every day. It's just, it's set up as a, as an alternative, as an emergency. Mr. Mahoney has been talking to the DeGeralmos. We don't want any argument here. They worked good together. They share equipment, so, um, you know, they know about this. We, we've talked to them. This isn't a surprise. They haven't, even though they haven't shown up, they're... And I've talked to him personally, and he's okay with it. So I can give you firsthand information. But that's not meant to be a primary access. It's just not.
The yellow?
Yeah, this is not meant to be the primary access. All of this is meant to go out where Cam just showed you. And yeah, only a portion of it's paved.
And how wide is the road? The, the gray road?
I think it's 25 feet. It's either 25 or 24 feet.
So Tracy, I did, um, specifically ask the fire department for their thoughts on that common driveway. And, um, Dave Larissy wrote, "I conducted a site visit of 61 East Belcher Road and found no issues. The road width and the road condition has not changed, and there is no vegetation encroaching in the roadway. The work that is being done is on a private site and has no public access or public safety issues. At the time of the site visit, there were no vehicles parked on the roadway. They were all parked on their own property. The fire department has no public safety concerns at this time."
They can turn a truck around?
I specifically asked about that and it doesn't seem to be a concern that he has.
I think there's still some work to be done with, um, Concom at this point.
Yeah, so the, the, the plans and the, and the, um, stormwater, um, was reviewed by, um, our consultants. They're still working out, uh, with Bay Colony final details. But I think, uh, it, I think everything is being worked out, so no, no problems.
And how long, um, has Lot 1A been utilized for that use?
I was, I Googled after the...
I don't think so. He just made up a word.
And I, there's, there's been, it's been cleared and trucks have been on it since 2003. And I think Mr. Mahoney purchased it in 2019?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. So it's been used that way, you know? And there's some question about whether it should have been used that way. Understood. It's being brought back into compliance now. That's what the purpose of this is, is addition to getting the building. So since 2003 was when it was originally cleared and you can see trucks parked there.
So we're going to ask the board to continue this so that, that things can get worked out.
Do we have a motion to continue the public hearing?
Um, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing of the site plan review at 61 East Belcher Road.
To...
Until?
Um, I think we talked about March 9th, continuing it to March 9th at...
March 9th. March 9th, the meeting is going to be at the high school.
Maybe.
Yeah, 7:15.
7:15?
There will be no Zoom for that meeting. The ZBA's meeting here.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Roll call vote?
Gary, aye. Kevin, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye. Hey, you see one March?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be washed up first. Okay, being a little after 7:25 PM, informal discussion with the Craft Group.
Wow, we got a tabletop one going, huh? Still impressed. Well, you won't get in trouble because you don't have a laser. So Mike won't have to yell at you.
Laser would work on that.
Gary and Kevin can't see it, so...
I think they should be able to see it. Can you guys see it?
There it goes, Mike's zoomed in.
Yeah. There you go, I can see it. All right.
I think, uh, good evening, Board. Dan Krantz, Beth Wierling with Craft Group. Thank you for having us this evening. Uh, we were in front of, uh, Gabby and Paige and had a couple of things we brought to their attention and they thought it maybe be best that we come in and formally give the board an update. And I thought at the time we would do that and then give an update on a bunch of the projects we have, uh, kind of in progress. Some that have been in front of this board and some that have not. But Beth's going to give a quick update on our expanded parking project, the one that we saw you, um, in spring, summer of '22. If you would.
Sure.
Maybe give an update. And part of, part of the reason we, we came to sit with Paige and Gabby was because of some slight modifications that we were looking to do, um, with the basin. But go ahead, Beth, I'm sorry.
Sure, so as Dan mentioned, um, one of the reasons that we're before you tonight is to tell you about one of the modifications that we had discussed with Paige and Gabby concerning a basin, um, over near Lot 45. Are you, do you remember which one that's over by Annette Road? Um, so what we are looking to do is, uh, kind of shift the location of one of the four bays, because we have an easement that runs from, uh, the beginning of Lot 45 at, um, Annette Road to where the cell phone, um, tower is right next door. So in order to maintain our access, we needed to shift, um, kind of the, the adjustment of where that, that basin was. Uh, we did have environmental partners review it, and I believe you have a copy of that letter that indicates that they don't have any issues with that. Everything maintains as it was approved, if not improving the quality. And as far as updates on the parking lots themselves, um, at this time, the clearing is complete for the most part across the project. And the, the, um, firm that's across Lot 44, 42C and 41 should be complete according to the specifications of our special permit and site plan decision by tomorrow, if not by Monday. And, um, we'll be waiting until the weather gets nicer to do the plantings and fencing. And, um, we are proceeding along with clearing and earth removal, um, over at Lot 55B. And you'll see lots of work going on across the board. So everything's moving along. Had pretty mild winter so far, so the contract has been able to continue things and just making progress.
Is your target to be complete by a certain day, like a Taylor Swift concert or something?
Yes.
Be inaccurate statement.
Okay. That's what we thought.
Yes, as...
And I, I, I won't, I will say safe and parkable. I don't know that it will be complete, complete, but I, it will be, um...
You want to use those parking lots?
You want to use those parking lots, yes.
Yeah, we'll continue to notify the town as we need to for our requirements within our permit decisions for basin install and things to that extent, but moving along.
Any, um, issues raised by the neighbors?
No, except for, um, if you recall, the last, well, one of the last meetings we had, or maybe, I don't know if you were here, but we did the gate. So ironically, it was, they were seeking a gate, um, so they could cut through. Three neighbors petitioned for that, so, um, yeah.
Interesting.
Nothing...
I'd rather they ask than just go ahead and cut it, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and Craft Group worked nicely. Everybody worked well together, so it was a, they were very, the neighbors were very appreciative and, um, it was a win-win, I guess. So, no, we have not heard any complaints that I'm aware of. So with respect to the basin, let's just wrap that up. Is the board okay? We did, like I said, we, there is a slight shift. It's not near the residential area. It's on the other side of Annette Road from the residential...
Almost imperceptible.
Yes, so, but we did want to make sure there wasn't any, you know, impacts to drainage, because neither of us know how to review that. And, um, environmental partners did confirm that it was an inconsequential change, so I think it would be good if you could just okay that.
Do you want to vote?
Any questions from the board or?
No.
Comments? Gary, Kevin?
No, I'm good.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve the site modification to the basin?
Yes, yes.
A motion, um, I'll make a motion to approve the site modification to the basin location.
Parking lot 45 basin?
Park in, parking lot 45 basin?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Gary, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Ron, aye.
And then the, uh, thank you. The, the other item that we had brought forth, um, was our Lot 4A. When, when we were before you, uh, fall of last year, we, we had shown you 4A and its general outline when we were going through and reviewing, um, where we had furthered the concept for the entire plaza for the new North End Zone project. And really, this is, this is just more of a developed plan than what you'd seen before. And it's primarily our ADA parking where our Lot 4A used to be right here. And now this is where our, um, security canopy is moved out to. So we've basically just kind of flip-flopped where the security canopy is and moved that and put our ADA parking there.
So Dan, can I just focus at home? This is over in front of the Hall of Fame, right?
I'm sorry, yes, the, the, the Hall of Fame sits right here. The Patriot Place and the new Freedom Wind Tunnel sits right through here. Just to put it in perspective. Yeah, and then the stadium's back, back right here.
Any changes since you last shared this with us, Dan?
There, there's really none. It's just a little bit of development. The road has changed a little bit. We've gone through and I think the fire departments looked at it, um, because they wanted to make sure we maintain access. There, there is one point here where the way, the way it reads is there's a barrier there, but it's a movable barrier. Because the, the point that Deputy Chief Larissy made was he wanted to make sure that at all times there was access, and just like we do today, there will always be access, um, into the plaza for fire apparatus. And again, so we have same amount of ADA spots that we, um, require to have. And we have a handful of non-ADA spaces and, and I think just based on conversation and kind of the way the world's headed right now, we, we're contemplating, um, maybe those EV purging stations. Just because now they're closer to Patriot Place, closer to the stadium, to the new Craft Group and to our new North Plaza.
How many, um, did you lose any parts? How many, did you lose any parking spaces with this?
We lost probably, we lost.
None of us could see you waving, sorry.
We probably lost about 30 parking spaces in that.
And is the?
So, Dan, I couldn't hear one of the things you were saying about the way the world's going in consideration of that. You were gonna, you were considering doing something and I didn't hear what that was.
We're gonna, Kevin, we're going to add a handful of new car charging stations, electric vehicle charging.
Ah, okay.
And is the lighthouse going back up?
For the lighthouse? Yep.
Okay.
But I'll say stay tuned for next Wednesday. Wednesday, Thursday, it's gonna be big days for us. They're adding these, it's, we're getting to the finicky part of the lighthouse because it's, the steel is coming in and starting to create the lighthouse and just obey. The system works, you can't just put the single stick and be able to hold it in place. So, they're building it on the ground as we speak and they're gonna do a big lift next Wednesday. So, you'll see it go up about 60 feet more by next Wednesday. And then probably a week from next Wednesday, so two weeks is when, right now, the 22nd is when we're planning on topping out the steel in the lighthouse. So, that'll be big days for us. And the only other thing is we've added, because this was a request, because this has always been a hard line with the landscape here, we've added just a, an access point into our Lot 5.
Is that the security area where the people will be hanging out? They're on the other side of that, right?
So, you got this in. You're gonna, you're gonna go through our Evolve system.
Right, but before you get in, do you have enough space outside there for all the people?
Like, is there any more plaza without being in a security area? Is that kind of what you mean?
Yeah, because you're kind of close to the parking in the street outside the.
I, again, I defer to our design professionals because they do this across the world and they've done all the modeling and they feel comfortable with it. And again, I don't know if you guys have seen it, probably Gary and Ron, have you used the Evolve system where it's really, it's not like the old school days where you gotta go through the scanner. It's literally, you're walking through it. And it's, and it's the one-off person that gets pinged and they have to grab them and bring them back through and then do the old school way with them. But it's, it's literally you walk through unencumbered, so there shouldn't really be lines. So, that's what we have for Lot 4A. And then I just thought I would quickly give an update on some other things. As it relates to the north end zone, again, thank you for asking, but that thing's moving along. We're gonna start the west or the east side, the glazing will start. So, here by mid-March, we expect to have the entire thing enclosed. And still driving for the home opener, you know, to have it open, open for business. And that's, that's moving along nicely. There's a north end zone bar that we have received a permit for in the northeast corner next to the field tunnel where the players come out. We have started this week construction on that. So, we took out some seats and some portions of the seating bowl. And so, that work officially started this week. And we look to, look to have that operational again, same kind of timeframe, July and August of next year. We are expanding our role of honor, so a big push to just heighten the awareness of what the role of honor is and just the visibility of it. So, we're working through some drawings with that and I think they just went into the building department this week. So, there'll be a big video board in front of it, a lot more space and again, just a lot more visibility.
That's great.
For those particular individuals. And then the only other thing is you walk around the stadium now where we have this huge new, two huge new scoreboards and everything else that we have going on is a lot of digital assets. And we've started, received our permit from the building department and started a huge new, I'll call it digital control room. And we'll have that operational by the first preseason game as well. And then something we've been working with police and fire and state police as well is a bunch of upgrades to Security Command. Our command has really kind of been in the footprint that we are in for, you know, 20-plus years now. So, with input from state police, from Foxborough Fire, Foxborough PD, we're reworking Security Command and that, that work will probably start in May of this year.
Will that also be done by the home opener? Can we push for that? Remember, if that was a big one?
I know.
Okay, so whatever you can do, Dan, to get that on the.
No, everybody's ringing that in my ear. The problem becomes.
Don't move away from the microphone.
The problem with that is a little bit of supply side. This is exactly what I told our people. We can get it done if I can get the equipment here on time. Because this is a big command, it's gonna be like a big command center. It has some pretty hefty HVAC systems. And if I can get all my HVAC systems here in time, I can have it done. So, that, that's my caveat. We can do the bricks and mortar piece of it, but can I get the equipment here? I don't know that yet. We just got the specifications arrived today. So, we have it out to folks to see what the supply chain is, but we understand the desire.
When did you say the new bar was gonna be done? Next year?
Nope.
Oh, you said next year, didn't you?
If I did, I said, if I did, I was incorrect.
Okay, it's gonna be done this year?
Yes.
Okay, I was like, it's gonna take you over a year to build a bar?
You know, we have.
Don't do that.
We have February to, you know, August 15th.
So, the goal is to finish the north end zone project by the opening day, is that it? I mean, are you?
The caveat for the north end zone bar or?
Or everything.
The north end zone is opening day is what we're driving for, not, so the preseason, it will not be ready for preseason. It's scheduled to be open for the home opener.
Okay.
Which is actually an improvement of what you were forecasting in the beginning. You were talking about November.
Yes.
That's good.
And so, now the news around town, which you know a little bit, we brought it up and is about this ticket price thing. And one of the things that I'm getting a lot of questions about is whether the Kraft Group has enough parking that they own to, of their own, to accommodate all onsite parking. And I did look back at the MEPA documents and it looks like you guys are saying you have about, what, 24,000 spaces? Is that onsite? Like, is that something you have handy that you could sort of verify? Because I'm getting a lot of questions about it.
Didn't obviously bring it tonight.
No, you don't have it tonight, but just that's something.
Next week, we can bring in all our.
But generally speaking, you guys have, because I remember in the old days, it was always that you needed satellite lots because you didn't have sufficient parking in the satellites lots. So, are we now in a position where you guys really do, you have 20 more, north of 24,000 onsite spaces? Okay.
You know, we added roughly in what the work Beth is doing right now, the 3,000 spaces in this expanded parking. So, yes, and we can bring, we have the spreadsheet.
Just so you know, as that evolves, that'll become a question, you know, I'm getting a lot of questions and.
Why? I don't understand why this is a big question.
The word is, and it hasn't been officially, but from, that the NFL has approved that ticket prices will now include parking. So, basically, everybody in theory could park on the Kraft Group property because they'll be paying for a ticket. So, as you can imagine, lot, satellite lot owners are concerned, you know, they call us. There's just a lot of people sort of talking, you know.
I didn't know about the tickets, including parking.
Yeah, but we haven't, I don't know that we've heard anything official, but it came, you know, from my top down. So, it's just been something that's percolating all over the place, so it'd be just helpful for us to have. I did go through the MEPA documents and I'm like, I think they have all the parking onsite. I mean, you know, I don't know what it used to be, but I do think they have the parking. So, it's an evolving process. You know, there's some concerns about traffic management plan, et cetera. So, I think there'll be some discussions in the future, if this really, if this quote-unquote rumor is really true. But it's a little more than a rumor, I think.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we'll bring all that in.
Yeah, I know you guys don't even know yet, fully yet either, so it's just.
Not at this level.
But just so you know, that will be, there will be some big questions.
Mr. Kraft might know.
Yeah, I'm sure he knows. Bill Keegan's the one who told me, so what his sources are, I don't know, but, yeah.
Great.
That's all we have.
Excited about the tower, the light.
Yeah, no, look, next week, next week, do a drive-by.
I will.
You guys have your social media crew out there and they do their little videos and stuff?
They will, yes.
Good.
Yeah, and if you're looking in, you know, you drive into the stadium right now on your left in, what is that, Lot 2?
You can see it being built.
Well, we have, these huge precast panels are sitting in the parking lot. Because they're starting to get backed up because the steel's just, you know, a couple of weeks behind, but, so the precast shown up, these huge precast panels, which will be the face of the lighthouse. So, they're, they're scheduled to go in, start to go in right after the steel's done, so.
That's awesome.
It's really gonna start to take shape over the next 30 days.
Great.
Yeah.
Keep announcing those concerts, too.
That does a lot for construction, I'm telling you. I'm really excited, yes, I am very excited, all our concerts. It is. No, we've, we've, we've got a good team that's working with us and it just, it has some challenges, but it's, it's great to have them, great to have the concerts and to be back in that business again.
Yeah, sure is.
Really is.
Thank you.
So, Dan, if I may interrupt, Ron, just one second, just before you leave. I'm just curious, so presuming that this ticket parking thing gets approved by the league, et cetera, will that also apply to other events like concerts or soccer or anything else?
I do not know that, Kevin, as I sit here tonight. I will try to get smarter on that, so I have actual answers for you.
Okay, well, you know, I'm sure we're gonna be talking to you guys about the new traffic management plan, so just, just so we know and when people call us, we can at least address it sooner or later.
No, hopefully, hopefully I can have some of those answers when we come to sit with Paige with the, with the parking count.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Walnut Street?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so did anybody have a chance to look at the plans that I sent out for Walnut Street? Do we have copies here, Dan?
Yeah, we only have one, so they're hard to come by, they're a big set with color, so maybe you can share them. But, oh, I should be talking.
Casey, why don't you go over there with them? I've already looked at them.
You only have one set?
Yeah, you can.
Oh, it's okay, I'm fine.
Nobody's looking at them?
Okay, I'm, but I'm gonna stand.
Well, just, yes, Ron did his homework. Good job, Ron. Well, just, this is, these are the plan sets that show the 200 all affordable senior apartments in a campus-like setting. I believe it's three buildings, the three stories max. You know, there's amenity areas and whatnot. That was what someone commented on, that there was a lot of amenity areas. There have been three neighborhood meetings, one with the developer and two prior to the developer being brought on board. The buffer to the North High Residence was pulled, you know, was increased. The developers made an effort to maintain the existing tree line and to try to protect, you know, the neighborhood. Yeah, feel free to open them up and take a look at them as. So, basically, you know, the zoning board just likes to hear comments and find out what other boards think. And I think they'd like to know if, you know, the planning board has any comments. And go from there.
My only comments were the three stories, but when you and I talked about it the other day, it made a lot more sense than the original cottage plan that was kicking around.
Yeah, we couldn't get the density, we, there's not me, there couldn't be the density of 200 units if they were cottage style, unfortunately.
This one abandoned blooms were.
No.
It's a whole different one, okay.
This is the bottom of Walnut Street, about where the ramp goes onto 95.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But diagonally across from the farm stand?
Yep.
So, and associated with this project will be a signal. And not only a signal at Walnut and 140, but there'll be a signal, I believe, at the bottom of the off-ramp from 95 now, so it'll be two, kind of like what you see in like Plainville and Rentham where you have to kind of have a signal there.
What was, what was the rationalization behind the three stories?
For the density they need to make the project viable.
Okay, and this is just for?
Strictly senior.
And what is considered senior?
I believe it's 60 and older, could be 55.
Are you there yet?
Not yet.
And it's gonna be affordable, kind of like a lot of the Housing Authority products, it goes affordability down to 30%, which, you know, some of these 40Bs, we're not seeing the 30%. But this one is being, it's a low-income tax credit, this is, it's not exactly like Carlin and Court because the Housing Authority runs that one. This will be run or owned by a developer, but they have to run it on behalf of the Housing Authority, so they have the deep, deep discounts, you know, income-based discounts. So, it's 30, 40, 50%, 60. It goes up to 80, but a lot of the product is going to be lower income to really help those residents that aren't getting any help for years, you know, the folks waiting on Carlin and Court and those type of product. And it'll also be, you know, quite modern. We know that there'll be people.
Beautiful.
Yeah, I think, I believe, I think I told Ron this and hopefully I'm not misspeaking, it'll be confirmed next week, but I believe that, you know, each building will have two elevators. I remember them saying they didn't want to just have one, so people had long hallways, kind of like Las Vegas hotels. There'll be two elevators in each and, you know, they're designed for accessibility. Not every unit is accessible, but they have, you know, some certain things they can do to make them accessible and keep them accessible. And then there will be truly accessible, accessible units, you know, with like the counters that don't have cabinets under them and whatnot. So, it's truly designed for the senior population.
And there's ample parking.
Can you touch on amenities a little bit, Paige, or is it only for that?
Um, I, I don't really know what the, I mean, there was like gonna be pickleball and, you know, there's a community, there's a community building and there's gonna be outdoor walkways and I don't remember specific. I haven't looked at it that closely on that regard, but there was gonna be a lot of, you know, amenities for residents out there. At one point, they were showing a dog park and we were like, don't, don't do it. Don't do it.
I think it looks great.
Yeah, it does look true.
And I'm not sure, there may be a schematic in here, but I didn't see it.
And towards the back is, not color, but there, you can see the elevations.
And so, how far from the Walnut Street?
The North High Residence, you mean?
Would this, no, would this driveway be?
Oh, um, doesn't show? I'd have to look at the.
It may, I'm not, I'm not seeing it.
I think you had a better site plan.
I'd have to look.
What is this?
Yeah, I think this is the highway, this is the corner here.
Is it the corner? Yeah.
So, it's pulled back as far as it can, and then they have, you know, obviously the secondary, that is emergency access, they, here's the buffer.
And so, is this signalized as well?
No, that will not be signalized.
Signalized? It's like Googled?
Signalized is a real word.
Oh, I guess Google doesn't.
It's not a Google Earth word term. And you see, they put the amenities sort of against there so that it's, you know, the building's a little further away from the homes.
Right, because the closest residence is probably right about here.
Is it on North High?
Yeah.
No, it's on Walnut, the closest.
Oh, the closest, okay, sorry.
And where is North High?
Up here.
Okay, okay.
Flip it, flip it towards the back.
55, I can get in.
It looks like building.
Yeah, there's elevation.
I thought there was a bigger.
I'm going to a deserted island with my Kindle. Does the ZBA have any concerns?
They haven't, sorry, let me get my mic.
They haven't started yet. They are, next Thursday night is their first meeting, so they have not had a chance to be seen, to be presented with the overview.
Any concerns from staff?
No. I mean, I haven't done a detailed dig in, I have to write a comment letter, but generally speaking, I mean, this is a tough one just because I've been working on this project for, what, four or five years?
Since you started.
Since I started, so, and it's just not something I've ever done, but it's just really worked out that, you know, with the land and working with Greg Speer, you know, and the development team. The great thing about this development team and one of the reasons the Housing Authority went with them is every property they've ever developed like this, they still own. They don't flip them, they stay in the management. It's PBD properties, they're well-known, they're established. So, this is, you know, we feel really good about. So this is, you know, we feel really good about the product that's going to be built and the company that we've been working with, so...
This is the entire site, right, here's all the abundance here.
But I think, you know, it's, it's a, I mean, it's a great, you know, it's a corner of a highway, getting the signal is gonna be a major, major thing. Even running the sewer down Walnut Street, from central, from central down Walnut, I mean, it's going to then serve Walnut Terrace, which is an existing Housing Authority property that's got failed septic systems. It opens up the ability for any of those businesses at the other side of Walnut to tie into the sewer if they want to. So from that regard, you know, it might expand tax base and capabilities up there.
I know the other potential development is getting a lot of attention and concern around it. Anything like that with this one?
We don't know yet, we don't think so. We assume there'll be, you know, a handful of neighbors that have concerns, but we believe this, being that this is more of a community project, and I don't wanna be naive, we do kinda think there's a lot of positive momentum behind this. You know, this is something we've all worked on for years, so, and the community, like I said, we've had three neighborhood meetings. It's been very well-vetted, so we do anticipate there will be some concerns, but we've also had people follow us out after the neighborhood meetings saying, "We're really in support of this," and they're from the neighborhood, so...
I haven't heard anything negative from the neighborhood, and I'm in the neighborhood, so I know a lot of the people that are on that side, on that end of North High.
So, so does anybody have any comments, any?
I think it's great.
Want to offer anything to the zoning board?
I think it's great.
I'll give it a positive.
Two thumbs up.
Any specifics, what about it makes it positive?
The way they put it to three, so there's, to achieve the density that's needed, but without the...
Crowded?
Massing? Yes, yes. I think the light, the signal, the signals that are gonna be gotten, the sewer, that's huge. And I think, I mean, they're all over, not that I'm on Facebook anymore, but Foxborough Discussion Group and different things, I mean, everyone's saying we need more affordable housing, in town especially for the, for the older generation, you know, the older folks, as well as others, and that, it's gonna meet that need.
Yeah, in the earlier meetings, that was one of the biggest things with the seniors, is they were, they were stating that they're stuck in their homes. They can't afford to move because they could sell and make a profit, but where they gonna go? There was no, there was no housing available in Foxborough, there was, I don't even think there was a waiting list of 10, 12 years.
That's how it is in a lot of towns, but it's awesome that Foxborough is gonna address it.
And this is gonna be primary, Foxborough resident gets preference, or is...
Well, that's one of the requests, I mean, it has to be approved by the zoning board, and that might be something you could include in your report, that I will write for you, is the zoning board has the ability to stipulate 70, up to 70% local preference. Now, that does have to be approved by DHCD, but it might be good to encourage the zoning board to, to include that as a desired condition.
I absolutely think that should be included.
Well, but that doesn't mean, like, if Foxborough residents can't fill it, we can, it can be filled by folks from their town.
Absolutely, it just means that the first lottery, it's like if you're a resident and employee, it is gonna be through fair housing, it's gonna be through a lottery, and then there would be a local option, there'd be X number of units available to locals, I'm guessing they'll fill, I think Greg Spear assumes that a lot of people that are in current might wanna move over there, and then that gives them the option of maybe updating some of the units, you know, 'cause they're also gonna get some lease payments on this property, so that'll provide a recurring revenue stream for the Housing Authority, which gets practically nothing, so, but yeah, so we don't anticipate a problem, but absolutely, the units would not sit empty waiting for local residents, and the other caveat is, is that that local preference is only on the first round. After that, it's, you can't, you know, in any rental with that local preference often, option, it's only on the initial occupancy, and after that, it just goes by the ranking that the state runs, you know, for all housing authorities.
And no concern about, I know often what's raised is police and fire and that type of stuff, no, we have the capacity.
Yep, we, I mean, we've worked with them, they're well-aware of it, I mean, I'm sure they're, you know, they know there'll be more calls there, but they did, they did request senior, as opposed to, you know, not senior housing, they, you know, they feel they can handle the concerns that come with that setting with senior citizens, so they have been involved from the get-go on this, and they're well-aware, and they did promote the senior option.
Awesome, do you have what you need?
I think I do, so local preference, you guys are in support of that?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Kevin and Gary, any thoughts or any input?
I'm just, I'm just pleased to see that this is traveling as far down the road as it is, I mean, it's been a long time since the years when we encouraged John Mitchell Moore to use the Housing Authority to purchase the property, and it's been there for a long time, and there's a lot of additional benefits that are coming along with us. Tracy mentioned the, you know, the lights, which are always a problem there at Walnut and 140, especially people trying to cross over to the other side, and I think the sewer is a huge thing. Our local, you know, reps and senator have been very supportive of it and have helped us get, you know, the ear of the people, you know, in government to help us out, Jake Alkenclaws was very helpful from the federal side to make sure that there were awards that were given that'll flow to us for this project. And I don't think there's any question about the fact that our seniors need additional housing, and so no matter how the shakeout comes, whether they come from Carlin or one of the other, you know, properties that we own and move over into there, that, as Paige mentioned, that will make room for others, and the way the housing authorities all work right now is regardless of what town you live in, you can sign up for senior housing in other communities, and it's a waitlist. So, especially after that first go-round, we will have new neighbors who potentially will move in either there or into existing housing that we have, and I thought that the thing that Paige mentioned about them having an opportunity potentially to update some of the older units at Carlin or Centennial Court would also be a big benefit. So, I mean, I'm very much in support of this, and I have been since we convinced them to go to the state and purchase it. I'm just hoping that, you know, we'll be able to convince, you know, the neighborhood that, you know, for any, people who have questions about it, that they can get more comfortable with it, and that, you know, the zoning board will do their best, I know they will, to, you know, get behind it and make sure things go properly.
Well said.
Yeah, I have to agree with Kevin, this is a big boom for the town, big win, in so many different directions for so many different reasons. I spent quite a bit of time looking over the plans today, and I was quite impressed with the, what I perceive as a lot of thought that went into it, 'cause I was, I was very pleased with the results, the way it's laid out. And I'm very anxious that finally something's gonna get done with this. They started talking about this back when I was on AdCom ages ago, now it's about time, and I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah. Great, well, thank you, everyone, I will draft a letter and probably run it by Kevin, and get that into the zoning board for next week.
Great.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
All right, and I know we're in a rush, 'cause everybody wants to go home, so, our favorite topic, zoning handout. Is that why Mr. Buckley's back?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh.
I thought he was going home to his wife. Oh, okay. Definitely should take him out.
So you have a handout here, I'm sorry for the late, that it just came, Barney and I were literally working on this up till right before I came, and it's a work in progress, and I don't wanna, just because it's in writing, it doesn't mean everything's established, but we've been really brainstorming around the warehouse, so to start, to kick this off, we've been really trying to figure out, you know, after the 2 Washington Street issue, and the trucking discussions that have gone on in town, and, you know, the questions of like what we, what Foxborough, what uses Foxborough wants to attract and whatnot. The first proposal we have is that we would eliminate entirely the used truck terminal, general commodity and public warehouse. So that's the first proposal, and then when we were looking at the use table and the map, we were kinda wondering why up in that area where we were, 2 Washington was, we have a split zone, and it's limited industrial and general industrial, and it was kinda weird of why the general industrial is up there, and I have a map with me.
Sorry.
Are you two paying attention?
Yes.
I'm not sure.
I spelled my name wrong. Can I just, I mean, does this mean we can never have a truck terminal, general commodity, public warehouse in our town?
Got a new one. Where did you go? Sorry, I dropped my pen, I laughed. It wouldn't, it would not be a new one, and we are, we are redefining warehouse later. It's just that, I mean, I think there's a question, there's a difference between a warehouse and a truck terminal, and, you know, the question has been raised whether Foxborough wants to be, you know, home to truck terminals, where the whole basis of operation is trucks and tractor-trailers. But that is for you all to be, to decide, this is not up to me, so that's why this, I'm putting this on paper, but I really am interested on the input of the board, and Kevin knows that, I mean, I've just been sort of throwing things out there and trying to figure things out, I've talked to Mr. Buckley, I've talked to some industrial landowners, I'm trying, we don't wanna be too heavy-handed, but on the other hand, you know, Foxborough is fortunate, you have a stadium, you have, it's a very desirable town, you know, you're not desperate for certain uses, you know, I mean, some of these uses you can leave to other towns, and we all know we need trucks, but does Foxborough need to be the home to the trucks? You know, we all saw what happened on Beach Street, and just like how hard it is to manage, you know, those bollards getting knocked over and everything. We are seeing an increase of trucks, regardless, whether, you know, so, anyway, one of the things that we came up with is, on this map, which, this is up here by Panis Road and Perry Drive, I asked Mr. Buckley, 'cause I consider him the encyclopedia of all zoning and land use in town, I asked why, you know, we have three different districts, we have the pinks, SI, we have the green, general industrial, and then we have the blue, and he was, you didn't really know. So then we started looking at the uses, and Gabby went through and kinda helped me out by looking at the difference between general industrial and limited, and there were very limited differences between the two. So we kinda said, "Why wouldn't this all just be blue?" No, without blue, yeah, blue, sorry, I get so confused, why would this all be blue instead of the green here?
I wonder about the oddest stuff.
We do, well, there's a reason for this, and let me back up. One of the things that's out there, oops, sorry, is Schneider Electric, I'm just gonna be honest, they've left the Nippon City Street site, and if you look at the map here, it is the green that matches up there. So the question became, you know, they're gonna be looking for new uses there, we don't know what's gonna happen with that, they're not ready to talk to us, but the question started to rise of, would we ever want warehouses and whatnot in this area?
No.
Right, so then it started to say, "Well, if we, if we don't allow warehouses in this area, then we're not allowing them up here in Panis Road, which is clearly where you probably want warehouses." So then that's where it begged the question of, "Well, maybe we should have this as general industrial, and then we would change the zoning to not allow warehouses in this district, 'cause this is really the only place it is, except up there." So that's the sort of reasoning behind all that, is just trying to look ahead and look, you know, for less conflict in the future when, you know, Schneider goes to sell their land, and we assume they'll sell it, I mean, and we don't know who's gonna go there. I mean, they got big buildings, they've got sewer, that's something that's coming up. So with number two on this list, sorry, is a list of all the parcels that are in the light green up top here on Perry and Phelps Road and Panis Road, that would, they would be rezoned to LI. And then on number three, this is where I'm looking for input, this is where I have changing warehouses to special permits and putting it "no" in the general industrial for a reason I just discussed, but I have two of them highlighted, the highway business and the LI. The LI, I think we keep, you know, we just keep that as a special permit, that gives you all the ability to review the use and whatnot. My question is around highway business. Do we wanna keep warehouses allowed in highway business? And the reason I ask that is, highway business is, is this green area, so I'm torn about it, because this green area is down here by Forbes Crossing, Forbes Crossing and that whole area. So it does, it's not too bad, but like Fisher Street and all that, I mean, that's questionable, but there is Cabot Industrial Park there, so that's questionable, maybe, then there's Bradley's Plaza, no, and then, where's the other one? Oh, up here, this is, kinda makes sense, but Route 1 and Main Street, so it's kinda Main Street and Route 1. So that's a question that I could go either way on in the highway business. You know, Barney and I were talking about it, and we were kinda, he was like, "I kinda think warehouses belong on Route 1." And I said, "Yeah, but what about all this blue down here?", and so then he was like, "Oh, good point." So we're kinda going around, but like, you know, where would you want these uses to be, and would you wanna still allow them in these green areas? You don't have to decide tonight, but that's something I'm really looking for input on, 'cause I don't think I should make that decision.
No, I think that if we limit them to more of a close proximity to highways...
It'll keep the trucks off the residential.
Away from the residential areas would be the ultimate goal.
I agree.
So that's tough, because really the only place that isn't on a highway in the green that I'm looking at right now is the Bradley's Plaza, but I don't think a warehouse is gonna go there, so I think we're pretty...
Almost they knock it down.
Yeah, I don't, I think we're pretty safe on that, but the other two, the Forbes Crossing area is definitely near, you know, 140 and 95, and then the one up on Route 1 is, you know, on Main Street, and so, and again, it would be a special permit, so maybe you just leave it as allowed, and...
Well, keep in mind, I mean, our, the debacle of Washington Street, sorry, is Route 1.
I know, I know. Gary and Kevin, you have any thoughts about highway business and warehouses?
Not this time, I'd like to think about it.
Okay.
But I do, Forbes, it belongs to Route 1.
The Forbes Crossing thing's a little bit concerning, only because it's so different, and there's a lot of residential around there, too.
Yeah.
Well, plus that, that...
I don't know, I'm with Gary, I think we just need to cogitate on this a little bit and see, you know, I'm certainly not against it, whatever we do of making it special permit, but it's a question of whether you do a hard no or you do a special permit.
Right, okay, so we'll take that under advisement, so you guys, now Tracy, you have something fun to think about, you know, and when you guys are having a beer or something at Shovel Town, you can really...
You're such a good person.
And here's another discussion item that is sort of new to the table. Kevin, Gabby and I met with Doug King this week, and one of the proposals is that we're looking to the planning board to discuss and possibly sponsor is changing the CPod, the Chestnut-Paison Overlay District, that's the area over by the state hospital, to allow an inn. And to be honest, the real reason for that is, is that Doug would like to do an inn over behind Conrad's.
I thought behind Conrad's was going to daycare.
Oh, yeah, that fell apart.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that fell apart.
There was a fine dancing issue, they couldn't, when the interest rates went up, they walked away.
What about, well, what is the definition of an inn?
Oh, thank you for asking.
You're welcome.
Definition of an inn, "An establishment within a single building that is designed and intended to provide lodging accommodations on a transient overnight basis of not more than 30 consecutive days within not more than 25 separate units, and that contains a restaurant holding a common victualer's license, liquor license, and other required authorizations for the provision of food and drink to the establishment's guests and the general public, both within such building and outdoors on its patios and sidewalks."
Yeah, I'm not feeling this one.
No?
I don't think an inn belongs there.
No, I agree with that, it does not belong there.
All right, well, the vision, the vision was, is that it would be like a farmer's daughter-type setup in the front, and then there'd be a three-story inn.
Are you, are you talking like the Blackington Inn?
I've never been to the Blackington Inn.
Well, that's, that's not a residential inn, the Blackington.
Yes, it is, you can stay at the inn.
Is it, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize that, okay, my mistake.
But that's on a main, that's on a main road, I just, I don't, I don't see it belonging there.
Is it like a Rally Point, wasn't Rally Point, is that an inn?
Yeah, it's Rally Point.
That's the first thing I thought of.
It's, I'm sure if Doug was the one to build this, that it would be more like the Colonel Blackington in Attleboro, but that's on a main route. That's on a main route.
What is?
The Blackington, this is, no, I gotta, and especially right by that...
Well, do you wanna know, do you wanna know the, some of the background of why there would be an incentive to do this? Is that it would result in a significant tie-in to sewer by the remainder of the Chestnut Green properties. There's all seek, they're all seeking to tie into sewer, a town meeting that accepted it, but Doug has already paid to tie into the private system there, and he doesn't wanna have to pay to private, to pay again to get onto the town system, so he hasn't done so yet. If he were able to do something like this and get such a viable development there, then it would allow him to tie in the rest of it, and then Chestnut Green could tie in to the town system, the town would take it over. town would take it over. And the benefit to that is the town wouldn't have to spend over a million dollars to upgrade its lift station. It could use the current plant, lift station or plant for that. And there would also be millions of dollars in sewer tie-in fees for the sewer system. So there is some financial...
For the town or for the...
For the town. Because they, the Chestnut Green would go away, the Chestnut Green private system would go away. And, I mean, it would be taken over by the town, and they would all tie into MFN. But it's at a considerable expense to do so. They have to buy all the capacity.
So it would be millions of dollars for Foxborough?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, it...
Paige, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Is this the same argument they had when they were talking about doing something with the auditorium is?
Yes. Unfortunately, that is gone by the wayside. The auditorium's not an option right now.
So, but, I mean...
Alternative, okay.
Yeah, this is kind of a different...
We, like, I just, I'm concerned with adding, I get it, millions of dollars. I agree with that totally in support. But that, that rotary, you know, depending on how much traffic an inn would generate...
Do you really think it's going to...
If there's a restaurant, sure. That, that traffic circle...
But there's restaurants right there now, right now. You know, Conrad's is right there.
Why would we add to it?
And so the other restaurants.
Why would we add to it?
I don't think it's all that bad.
I don't think so either, actually. I drive it every day.
I do, too. I live right by it. I, I just...
No, I don't think it's all that bad, Tracy. It handles game day traffics. It handles...
That's with, that's with controls in place.
Well, there's, yeah, but there's no control at the rotary itself, at the roundabout.
Yes, and no. You know, obviously, it's, it's not an optimal design coming in off 140. We've even talked about that in the past, granted, but just the rotary itself, I think, functions.
I mean, I feel like an inn would generate less traffic than a daycare.
That I would agree with.
And so like, and I mean, yes, on Saturday and Sunday mornings, you know, if it were a place like the Farmer's Daughter, you know, I mean, yeah, you're probably going to get people there, but I mean...
You have the owner at the Farmer's Daughter. If you would like to be put in contact with them.
Well, Doug is the landlord for the Farmer's Daughter.
Oh, good.
So, I mean, he can't guarantee it, but he, you know, seems to think...
Well, they just, they had opened that restaurant next to the Farmer's Daughter, and that, they ended up closing it, so they might be a little gun-shy.
Yeah, I have no idea. But that, it would be something like that product. So, I mean, I guess I know what you're saying. I just don't, and it's up to the town, obviously, but I just, I don't know that that use, that people are going to be thronging to an inn. And, you know, yes, a restaurant, but like Kevin said, I mean, Conrad's is busy every Friday night, you know, there's a wait. And, I mean...
I think the millions probably outweigh the minimal downside.
Yeah. So that's just, I know that's the first you're hearing it. It's relatively new. It's something that we just met about this week.
It's an interesting concept. I mean, it needs a little more vetting.
Definitely give you some time to think about it.
I would absolutely strike that 30-day provision. I mean, you've got residents in up in the business park, and there are longer, certainly longer stays than that. I mean, almost like permanent resident.
Yeah, but I don't know that we were talking about, maybe we don't want that.
We don't want that. I mean, that's what they, that's what they have at the Mariner. We don't want, no, this is not a, this is not a home, like a home base. This is, you go and you stay for a weekend. Maybe you go to a game. Maybe you go to a concert, and you go home.
Yeah, I think that was the goal, is to keep it short-term. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, one of the, and one of the reasons for that is, is that the, the fully full-time living was capped at the 203 units there. So we don't want to encourage an additional new apartment community, a permanent resident, however you want to phrase that, because it would, it would fly in the face of that thing. This thing, you know, because it is more of a, has a more of a transient nature or a timeline on it, I think, you know, works, you know, in a way that allows something like this to happen. And, you know, everybody's right. I mean, the benefit probably outweighs the negatives that, that might be there. But, I mean, we, as a board, we need to, you know, come together and make that decision, and then town meeting's going to have a say, too, so.
Right. So this is your first time seeing it. Want to give it some thought, take, you know, read over it?
I'll ruminate.
Yeah, ruminate. That's a lovely word. And then there's a bunch of definitions to ruminate over. Some of their more housekeeping, like the graveyard and the setback and tattoo parlors, those are all sort of coming from zoning and building department, looking for some insight. The word, the inn definition, and then we did redefine warehouse. And that definition is changed over our original one, because it gets a lot more specific. It basically makes clear that a fulfillment center is in a warehouse. And some of those questions that came up during our Washington Street project, you know, that we, you know, our bylaw was so vague that it was hard to know. This gives a little more refinement as to what exactly a warehouse is and is not. And then the other ones, I think I've briefly covered. I won't go through them. But limited site plan review is just formalizing that process we followed for the exempt uses. So I kind of already presented that. And then housekeeping is to get rid of the, the word town planner, the words town planner, and change it with, to land use and economic development department. Require that applicants meet with the planning department or the land use department before a special permit. And then fixing a typo about environmental impact statements. So some housekeeping mixed in with some real substance. So please do ruminate, and let's have some fruitful discussions in the future. Nothing's decided. This is all kind of new. And, yeah.
I would just like to go on record that ruminate is a real word. Googled is not.
Yes, it is.
As a practical matter, would you propose handling this in multiple articles?
It's kind of written out, I think, the way it is.
As a single one?
Which one?
Separate articles.
These are all the numbers.
Oh, all right.
Each number would be a different article.
Okay. On motion. Every, Kevin, you okay?
Yeah, I just, I was just going to ask Paige about this, one near the bottom of 9.7 for the pre-application process, blah, blah, blah. Can you just go over that for one more second? I know Barney thinks it should be totally rewritten.
Yeah, let's see.
What number?
Uh, nine point, on page, no pa, uh, page...
It's down the bottom.
Well, that's weird. There's no page numbers.
Yes, there is. Down the bottom.
They all say page five.
They all play page 505. It's on page not five, or page five, I mean, sorry.
The actual page five.
Yeah. So it says where it's highlighted. Barney is suggesting that this section be rewritten, rewritten in its entirety to be consistent with the wording for section 912, 9142. So I think he just, you know, it's a little more change that's probably needed, but it made the paragraph more elegant the way, you know, if you had just merely replaced it. I can look up, let me just see what it currently says.
It's right there below it.
It's right below.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, and the town... Yeah, but that doesn't really explain why, why he, like, the way, the rewriting is a little interesting, isn't it?
Can't take that to the senior housing.
Thank you, yes. Isn't it right below it?
It is. But I just wanted to see what, but there's a lot of stuff, but I just was curious why Barney made a point to make that comment. Like, Barney actually had this note in here, so I just wanted to see why, you know, because the sent, it actually, this is how it currently reads. "Prior to submitting a building application for a project within the FCOD, the applicant shall contact the town planner to arrange a pre-application meeting to review the project. The town planner will coordinate, if applicable, further pre-application meetings with the planning board and/or a joint administrative meeting. The purpose of the pre-application process is to answer questions and concerns in order to streamline the review process for applicants." So he did change, you know, some substance. And I think he just wanted people to know that he kind of made it a more elegant paragraph. So there was more than just the...
And just changing the plan, town planner to director of land use, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
We can ruminate.
Yes.
And then you can ruminate. I know you missed me the other week.
You're a very, you're very bovine this evening with the rumination, you know.
When you tune into Planning Board, you get English lessons as well.
We got to look up...
Well, that's why this thing's highlighted in pink.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kevin, aye.
Tracy, aye.